All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mayor Bremen. The time is seven o'clock, and we're going to get this meeting going. So Deb, would you kindly do a roll call?
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Hansi.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Parrish.
Present.
Counselor Stolarczyk.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would invite everybody to stand, take a moment of silence for prayer or thoughts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, we're so excited because there's so many kids here. It just makes it fun. Deb, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we did have one correction to the agenda since it went out on Friday. When it went out, it didn't have the acknowledgement of a newly appointed board, boards and commissions members, so that correction was made today.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All right. Please poll.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish. Counselor Stolarczyk. Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Motion passed a six zero.
Right. Thank you. As you can tell, we have a very, very full house. It's exciting to see so many people here. We have a number of proclamations and graduates here, so we're going to just kind of jump right into it. So first up, we have Fruta Student of the Month. So tonight, we have, sorry, Principal Larson here. She would like to recognize some of the students and I'm going to make sure I get this straight at Monument Ridge Elementary School. So, Ms. Larson, would you like to, Principal Larson, would you like to come up and say a few words? Thank you. Sorry for putting you on the spot, but you've got a great group here.
It's okay. New mayor, new rules.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you for being kind.
I brought my amazing student council leadership with me today. And at Monument Ridge, our vision is building a community of kind learners. So when you talk about recognizing students, our student council members really help lift up our vision at our school. We truly believe if we can teach children to be kind, then certainly the learning will follow. So today, we have, it's an all-women leadership team this year, and I think you're going to be presenting them with certificates.
Thank you. Amy, can you give me a hand with this? Maybe missing. As we call your name, if you could please come up. First up, Hayden McComb, Student Council President. Come on up. You don't get to, no, you stay up here. A little bit more torture for you. Next, we have Olivia Gagliardi. Did I pronounce that correctly? So sorry. Thank you. Ava Engelhardt. And I forgot to mention, she is the historian. And last but not least, is Casey Christ, Student Councilperson. And we know people are going to want to get pictures. You guys want to come on up? You guys stay down. We'll kind of get around you. If you want to scoot over a little bit. We've got more tall people in this council. We've got to figure this one out. Right. Let's give them another round. By the way, I don't know if it's new mayor, new rules, or new mayor is still getting used to the position, so we'll figure this out. So next up, we have a proclamation honoring and appreciating the Fruta Monument High School Boys Basketball Team and Coach Wells. And Amy has taken the time and written a very special proclamation.
Some of you may know I'm a big Fruta Monument fan, so. All right. In Fruta, Colorado, we absolutely love our high school sports. Nowhere is this truer than on our basketball courts. We all pull on our Fruta blue and love to pack the stands. You'd be hard pressed to find a more passionate group of fans. In 2023, though, our lead, our team's leadership was uncertain. We needed someone strong and true, a dedicated person. Coach Wells stepped up and took the job. He'd coached champions before. He saw the potential in these boys, knew they could do so much more. He made them a promise he intended to keep and asked them all to buy in. If they would put in the time, the work, and the grit, he knew they could bring home the wins. He recruited assistants he knew he could trust, each with their own special skills, to help this team reach the ultimate goal, a true dream season to fulfill. The offseason was hard. The boys had to adjust to their new coach's style. They learned structure and discipline were keys to success if you want to reach that last mile. So they put in the gym time and did extra reps. They shot hundreds of frees from the line. They started to find their rhythm as a team. Their philosophies began to align. As the season progressed, that hard work paid off, just as coach knew that it would. With jet speed and accuracy leading the charge, the team's confidence grew as it should. The stands were packed tight each and every game. Fruta knows how to show up. No one wanted to miss one of DT's slam dunks or Max's beautiful layup. With Mason tossing up threes and Austin all over the court, the wins soon began to tally. Wilson, Isaac, and Lucas were always right there, fresh and ready to help the team rally. Week after week and game after game, those boys sure showed up and played. Even when they were tired, injured, and sore, their will to win just would not fade. Tough teams came over from much larger schools, certain they'd take those cats down. But try as they might, they just could not win and would leave with a small baffled frown. How could it be that this Western Slope team could stack up wins against these huge schools? Didn't they know 6A was out of their league? Surely their winning was against the rules. Those cats just kept winning. They clawed their way up the rankings that Chassa was posting, until they soon reached the top, the number one spot, a feat that was truly worth boasting. With a trip to the Coliseum now on the line, they were not ready, quite ready to lose. They still had much further to go, needing to show the season was not a ruse. As the number one seed going into playoffs, Fruta had earned the coveted home court slot. The fans all filed in to cheer for their team. The line poured out into the parking lot. And what a game it would be. Not a single dull moment. The energy crackled and popped. The first half was close, but the cats soon pulled away, showing they would not be stopped. Now they were off to the big Coliseum. Grade eight was the name of the game. The town lined the streets and cheered as they passed, calling them each out by name. They knew they would need to bring all that they had. They'd made it further than ever before. They'd need to play their hearts out, leave it all on the court, and maximize every score. The big day, game day came. Those boys showed up to play. And while it ended up not quite enough, they did not fall easy. They put up a fight and showed everyone Fruta is tough. They turned that top seed and they'd gone undefeated in honor quite rare indeed. They'd shown what could be done with hard work and grit and a coach who was ready to lead. The season's behind us. It's all over now, but to show our sincere appreciation, we, the mayor and city council, want to honor you with this proclamation.
Coach Wells, are you?
He's there.
Come on up. Would you like to say a few words? We'll give you the option.
Thank you very much for that, Amy. I just want to thank you guys on the City Council and, and on behalf of our team and the entire community. I was blown away by the support we received, in particular through, through the whole season, but in particular the last couple of games. I mean, we're talking lines out the door, around the corner. You know, I coached 15 years at the collegiate level and never coached in two environments like those two playoff games. And, you know, I, I told our guys all the time that the support for this community was here. And if we acted the right way and handled business and, and bought into the system that this community would come out and support. And on behalf of the guys, I can't thank everybody in this town enough. It was unbelievable what we experienced. And I know we still talk about it today, and I know something we'll talk about, the 10-year reunion and 20-year reunion. And I don't know if I'll be around for many more than that, but you guys can enjoy it from there on out. So thank you very much. A good group of guys that represent our community well.
The team, you guys should come on up.
Okay.
Come on up. I want to point out, some people brought hats. Yeah, I just.
Just hang out for the rest of the two hours or two hours. Let them know that the 2017 Doctor of the Year. Is it? I was a guest. Yeah.
Way to write a proclamation. That's just impressive. All right. So our next proclamation is Teacher Appreciation Week in the city of Fruta. And Janine, would you like to read the proclamation, please?
Yes. Whereas Mesa County Valley School District 51 employs 2,771 teachers and staff currently serving 20,208 students in 46 schools throughout the Grand Valley. And whereas teachers work hard in schools throughout the nation every day to provide a safe, high quality and stable learning environment for children. And whereas the education teachers provide has the power to strengthen our economy and our society as a whole by growing students who graduate prepared to become successful members of society and workplace. And whereas our future is written in schools across our country, and teachers should be held in high public esteem, reflected the value placed in their skills and abilities and the importance of public education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council proclaims May 6th to the 10th, 2024, as Teacher Appreciation Week throughout this community and calls upon all members of our community to express their appreciation for educators who engage, equip, and empower our learning community. Today for a limitless tomorrow.
Is Mesa County School District Number 51 Executive Director Angela Christensen here. Yes. Oh, there you are. Somehow missed you. Like to say a few words?
I sure do. Thank you so much. And I also invited all the Fruta area principals to come join me. So if you want to come up, we have at least three. Thank you so much. This proclamation means so much to our D-51 teachers, and we want to sincerely thank all of you for this. Those teachers have made our over 20,000 students in School District 51 feel safe and supported in such a strong learning environment. I'm pleased to share, I think you'll appreciate this information, that our D-51 teachers have worked hard to increase the graduation rates to a 17-year high in Mesa County, and that's pretty exciting. In addition to that, their focus on academic growth and achievement helped our school district recognize 27 of our schools as performance schools, and that's with the highest academic rating in the state of Colorado. Their hard work, day in and day out, is making a substantial difference all throughout Mesa County. And I want to send just a special note of thanks to your new mayor. Thank you so much for agreeing to join us in our PSA Teacher Appreciation video, videos, along with Mayor Stout from Grand Junction and Mayor Michaeli from Fruta, and other community leaders like our Mesa County Commissioners, D-51 Superintendent Dr. Brian Hill, and CMU President John Marshall, and many others. I also want to send a congratulations to Mike Bennett over here for your recent recognition as City Manager of the Year. The D-51 Foundation sincerely appreciated your service on our board, helping to serve the students in our community. So thank you so much.
All right. Next proclamation is for Police Week, and Counselor Rich, would you be so kind to read that?
Sure. And I feel somewhat honored, having served on the Crime Stopper Board of Directors for a few years, and I know many of those in law enforcement, and happy to recognize some of you standing in the back there. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in committees, communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our local law enforcement agencies, to include the Mesa County Sheriff's Office, the Grand Junction Police Department, the Palisade Police Department, the Fruta Police Department, Culburn Marshal's Office, the Beck Marshal's Office, and the Colorado State Patrol. Whereas approximately 55,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported, on average each year, resulting in more than 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 26,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including five from the local law enforcement agencies. Mesa County Sheriff Deputy Edward Ines was killed on September 27th, 1906, during an inmate jail escape. Colorado State Patrol Sergeant Wesley Rosette was killed in a crash on January 31st, 1951. Fruta Police Department Acting Chief Dan Daly was killed in a motorcycle crash in June of 2001. Deputy Derek Gere of the Mesa County Sheriff's Office died after being shot by an armed suspect in February of 2016. Most recently, Sergeant Wayne Wyler lost his battle to COVID in December of 2021. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 134 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2023, three of whom were fallen Colorado heroes. Sergeant Michael Moran of the Cortez Police Department, Community Parole Officer Christine Guern Sandoval of the Colorado Department of Corrections, and Officer Julian Becerra of the Fountain Police Department. Their names will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial located in Washington, DC this year. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024 is National Police Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council for the city of Fruta formally designates May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as Police Week in the city of Fruta, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you. Come on up, if you'd like to say a few words kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I would like to say some words, but I feel like I owe it to you to express from myself and the entire department that we all think that it is a privilege and an honor to be able to serve the residents of Fruta. We enjoy tremendous support, and a lot of people think that we have a difficult job, but I would argue that the teachers have a much more difficult job. But just like the teachers, we also have a very rewarding job. And so thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for what you guys do.
Now, I also have to take a minute to thank Chief Matt Smith with the Grand Junction Police Department for bringing out here tonight.
What's going on, Matt? You're not getting out that easy.
Hey, Tony. Tony, why don't you come up here, too?
I know we have a lot of proclamations tonight, but it's one of the great honors of what we get to do up here, which is really kind of express what's important to the city and recognize those that really make Fruta in the community what it is. So thank you. But we're not done. So, next, Councilmember Andrea is going to read our National Parks Work Proclamation. Public Works, sorry.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Fruta. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works, works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Fruta to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved that the Fruta City Council does hereby designate the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all.
Our Director of Public Works, Kimberly Bowlen. I know, would love to say a few words.
Best part of my day. Kimberly Bowlen, Public Works Director, Mr. Mayor, members of council, on behalf of the men and women in public works. We just want to thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week and the contributions that these folks make day in and day out. They work so hard to keep the infrastructure in good shape and make sure that it's safe for the community. And this just goes to show that they directly impact every resident, business, and visitor to the city of Fruta. So thank you for that recognition.
Thank you.
Starting off strong, thanks. All right. All right. Next up, Councilmember Erin Hansi is going to read a proclamation for Days of Remembrance.
Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Jews were the primary victims, with 6 million Jews murdered. In addition, Roma, disabled people, Poles, gay men, Jehovah's Witness, Soviet POWs, and political dissidents also suffered terrible oppression and death under the Nazi tyranny. And whereas a well-educated community is necessary to promote the ability to respond effectively to hateful speech and to prevent actions based upon hate. And whereas in recognition that hatred, racism, bigotry, and intolerance challenge our society today, the state of Colorado requires that by July 1, 2023, each school district board of education and charter school include Holocaust and genocide standards as a requirement for high school graduation. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas the people of the city of Fruta, Colorado should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas we, the people of the city of Fruta, Colorado, should actually rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas the Days of Remembrance have been set aside for the people of the city of Fruta, Colorado, to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as reflect on the need for respect of all people. And whereas pursuant to 1980 Act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council annually designates Days of Remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. This year to be Sunday, May 5th through Sunday, May 12th, 2024, including the Day of Remembrance known as Yom HaShoa, Monday, May 6th, 2024. Now, therefore, we, the city, Fruta City Council, on behalf of Matt Bremen, Fruta City Mayor, Fruta, Colorado, does hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, May 5th through the Sunday, May 12th, 2024, as Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and honor of the survivors as well, to the rescuers and liberators. And further proclaim that we, the citizens of the city of Fruta, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs.
So to accept this proclamation, we have Associate Professor of History and founding of the Holocaust Awareness Series at Colorado Mesa University, Vince Patarino. Would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
I wanted to first thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for this amazing document. I began the Holocaust Awareness Series right after I moved to Grand Junction to teach at what was then Mesa State College back in 2003. And I was only here a week or two, and I went out on And I was only here a week or two, and I went out on a Saturday morning and in my driveway was a baggie with a rock in it. And it had a flyer with the most racist, horrific language that you could ever imagine. Not only about Jews, but about various peoples of color. And at first, I was just absolutely freaked out because I thought, Dorothy, you're not in Kansas anymore. Where have I landed? What I found out was that there was actually more of that kind of hate speech and actions on the front range that year. And it was then that spring that I began the Holocaust Awareness Series. I've been lucky in that I've had the backing of the university, including now especially our President, John Marshall. The series is more, is not just about education, although that's an important part, right? The awareness part. We put up a field of flags that represents all the different groups that were taken out during the Holocaust. And so what I think is just so absolutely amazing about your document is, one, that very first paragraph where you mention all the different groups. And then also a little bit further down, that we, the people of the City of Fruta, Colorado should always remember the terrible events. But then that we want to be able to reflect this respect for all people and we need to do that on not just the individual level, but on the community level as well. That's really, in a way, what the Holocaust Awareness Series is about, is to recognize that, you know, we say never again. And yet, it continues to happen. And until we start making steps like this, until we start not just making statements, but have actions to try to make things different, it won't stop. And so I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity to be able to not only be here to accept the proclamation, but for the journey that you are making also as a city council on that road to really try to make a difference. Thank you.
We are actually done with proclamations, but we have a presentation.
Hi, Mayor and Members of City Council. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize our second class of the Fruta Academy. So the academy is a four-week program where students get to learn firsthand what we do here at the City of Fruta. And all the students heard from our Mayor, Matthew Bremen, our City Manager, Mike Bennett, and then all of our department directors as well. And really, yeah, got a firsthand look at all the departments and the services we provide here. So, um, these students took time out of their busy lives to spend the last four weeks with us, and we are truly lucky to have such a community that that is engaged and willing to spend their time learning about local government. And tonight, we want to recognize them. So before this city council meeting started, we had a little celebration in the F-Works conference room with cupcakes. And I hope you all had a chance to talk with our students and get to know them a little bit and see how much they are passionate about the Fruta community. We had twenty-one students sign up for the Fruta Academy this year. And I know, I hope, most of them are still in the audience tonight, but we do have a certificate for them. So I would ask Mayor Bremen to come up and help me pass them out with me. So, congratulations to the twenty twenty-four. Not everyone's here, but I'm still going to call everyone's name to recognize them. We have Sandy Dallenberg. Is she in the audience? Nope. Mike Dallenberg. Yes. Thank you. We stay up here. Awesome. Thank you. Jan Gamel. Steve Height. And Denise Height. So I'll get those to them. Deb Hogstedt. Diane Killen. Becky Klink. Gail Meyer. Thank you, Gail. Alright, Elizabeth Nun.
Thank you.
Michael Paul. Thank you. Joan Robinson. Steven Sakarisen. I know, you're the tall one. We have Steve Cersei. And Janie Cersei. Bonnie Schlegel. I know. Matthew Bremen.
Thank you for joining us. Megan Cooper.
We also had Ian Cooper. Thank you. And then Matthew Anderson. Sit down a little bit. Alright, yeah, of course. I just want to say thank you again to all of you for joining us in the Fruta Academy. It was super fun and I hope you all enjoyed it, enjoyed it and learned something new. And like Mike mentioned in our last meeting, we hope to see you all around being co-creators for the City of Fruta, ambassadors, still being engaged, maybe even joining a border commission. So, we hope to see you around. So, thank you again and congratulations. Yes, let's get a class photo.
Is your...
You guys don't want to stick around for TMDL?
Thanks again, guys.
Yeah, and Class of Twenty Twenty Four, yay.
Do you know why your wife sort of gets a little knot signed?
And this is going to go on record. She didn't graduate. Actually, we'll wait to call that one out. She missed half the classes, so therefore she doesn't graduate. It's gonna be a rough night at the house. We give people just one more moment. I'm shocked.
I'd be hurt or offended if they didn't stay around.
Little maximum daily load. This is actually what I'm excited about.
This is exciting stuff.
Alright, next on the agenda, keep it official. Uh, we have our public work structure, Kimberly Bolen, here to talk about total maximum daily load. You're up.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Kimberly Bolen, Public Works Director. So, this is a kind of an annual update for council and specifically since we have new members of council to kind of bring you into the fold of the TMDL conversation. The City of Fruta is a partner with the Grand Valley TMDL Stakeholder Group that is working on the total maximum daily load assessment for the Colorado River Tributaries in the Grand Valley under the Clean Water Act, Section three oh three D. In February of twenty twenty-four, the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission entered a final agency order denying the Mesa County Administrative Appeal and upholding the division's TMDL for the Grand Valley Tributaries. At this point, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment is implementing the TMDL for Adobe and Leech Creeks with regards to E. coli, total recoverable iron and dissolved selenium. So with us tonight, because she's much better at explaining this stuff than I am, is Carrie Goodorf with Mesa County Regulatory Program Manager. So, I'm going to invite her up. That was a mistake.
Sorry, in advance for those of you who have been through this before. Okay, and then do I need to turn on full screen up there?
See, she knows the stuff there.
Thanks, Fruta City Council, for having me. My name's Carrie Goodorf and I work for Mesa County. I'm the Regulatory Programs Manager and one of the programs that I manage is the Stormwater Program. And like Kimberly said, our MS four program is the urbanized boundary within Mesa County. So it's only a small sliver of banana, fat banana, that goes through the middle of the of Mesa County. So this is where we're going to be affected with our CDPHE because we all have a permit to manage stormwater in our valley. Our partners include Mesa County, Fruta, School District fifty-one, Palisade and we're all partnering in this together. And it's quite the task. So clean water is really important. We have the native fish. My small fish that I caught is size, but I like putting that picture in there. We all like to swim and recreate and we all love our produce. So, clean water is really, really important to all of us. Like Kimberly said, TMDL is a total maximum daily load and what CDPHE identifies that is the amount of pollutants that a stream can meet and still meet water qualities. And the EPA is who sets the standards. The CDPHE is who has to drive the monitoring and the requirements in the state of Colorado. So they have to identify the pollutants coming in for the water quality standards. They look at the point sources, the non-point sources and any background loading. But this is all a real expensive program that is a non-funded regulatory mandate. So this is what a TMDL is. You look, you have the background loading, you have non-point sources from farms and agriculture. You have wasteload allocations from MS fours, who, that's who we are, industrial and other permitted like wastewater treatment plants. These, this is a map of the TMDL watersheds. The red is the, I want to make sure I get this right. So when I look at it, it's monitoring and an evaluation for E. coli. And then it is identified for selenium and iron. And there's two small stream segments, Adobe Creek and Leech Creek that are highlighted in green. And it's pretty hard to see on this map, but those are identified for E. coli and they exceed the standards for a recreational standard, which is pretty funny because I don't know anybody that recreates in our drainages. The CDPHE is worried about for our E. coli standard. And so those are the two that are identified for E. coli. Up above in the pink shaded area is the Pine Gulch. And so that's also a nutrient source that comes off of fires. There's excess nitrogen and phosphorus and things. There's a couple of stream segments that are towards Palisade that are getting monitored. But I anticipate in the next ten years with the water quality roadmap, there will be more stream segments that are going to come online with additional requirements and regulations. I want to identify, the black line is the urbanized boundary and that's where my regulations, where I have to run the MS four program. So, something to keep in mind, you can see a lot of those watershed boundaries are towards the booklets, which makes sense. This is a long, I won't bore you too much, but this is how long we've been working on the TMDL. And it actually goes before twenty twenty-one. But the first TMDL was issued in twenty twenty-one. And so we've been working on this and fighting the CDPHE since then to say, we're different. Mesa County is really different. We have a high background of selenium. Regardless, we're going through and we're doing water sampling and we're showing that look, all the E. coli is not coming from wastewater. It's not coming from failed septic systems. We have other reasons of why this is happening. And we have water segments that go from the east end of the valley all the way to the west end of the valley. And they don't, they don't understand why we're so complicated. So we got our second TMDL. They reissued our TMDL in February of twenty twenty-two. And then by summer of twenty twenty-two, they issued our second TMDL, which we went in for an appeal. And that's when, in November, we had two days of hearing with the Water Quality Control Division. We hired experts and attorneys to try to bring in any sort of fight we could into this to say, we need to revisit this. Let's get this right before we put it in place. Because once the regulations are in place, it's harder to get them removed. We want to get it right before we got it in. It wasn't, we weren't listened to. And the Water Quality Control Division issued the final order in February of twenty twenty-four. They had, they submitted it to the EPA in March and then the EPA doesn't have a deadline of when we will know when we actually have a final TMDL. But what that means is when I get a final TMDL, it's written into our permit. So my MS four is going to have specific regulations for TMDLs, which could change some development. It can change the way we have to monitor. It's going to increase our permit fees because we're going to have more requirements in the permit and what we need to take care of. So, when it's accepted by the EPA, they're going to focus on a couple of different things. They're going to work on us collecting data and reporting sources of E. coli, selenium and and iron. The first permitting term, the CDPHE has said to me, don't worry, we're not going to require physical, chemical or mechanical treatment, which is great. The City and County of Denver have put in fluorescent UV treatment for their E. coli. And it's expensive and it's not working. So, not to be negative about it, but I want to get this right and I want to try to figure out where this is actually coming. The focus is going to be on public outreach activities, which we already do as part of our permit requirements. And then the CDPHE permit, the MS four permit expires in twenty twenty-one, but it was administratively extended. At that point, when the division gets to when they put my permit in place, they're going to give me a few things. They're either going to say, okay, we're going to let you run with what the permit conditions are, or they're going to make me get a specific MS four. okay, we're going to let you run with what the permit conditions are, or they're going to make me get a specific um, MS four permit. So we're not entirely sure what that's going to look like. But I've been promised we're not going to have some of these items um, as a requirement. But what I'm trying to do um, is look at a couple of different options. I'm looking at a use attainability standard, um, which is going to change possibly. It's going to take a lot of work to get into these, but it's looking at the water quality standards because we know we have naturally uh, background selenium. And we know we have E. coli that's coming from natural sources. We have deer and coyote. We have a lot of geese in the valley and we have um, something cool that we've been working on with the USGS is MST markers. So we're looking at um, the genetics of where the uh, E. coli is coming from. So we have um, different ways that we're looking at who did it. So it's pretty cool what we're doing. Um, and so getting the standard though, it's not feasible. Um, looking at the selenium standard and looking at the E. coli standard, it's not feasible. So we've gone through the use attainability analysis. We did a real high level um, overview and the look at Mesa County did with SGM. Um, and we're going to have some next steps of things that we're going to have to do that could possibly help us bring us into a site-specific standard for Mesa County. So these are items Kimberly and I will be working on and all of our partners in the next couple of years to see if we want to go this direction. Um, especially because selenium is naturally occurring. Where we've been, twenty twenty two, we did water sampling. We started water sampling with USGS. That's when we did a lot of the micro um, microbial source tracking and we got the data set. Twenty twenty three, we continued our monitoring. We're continuing looking at the concentrations in the loading because that's one of the things that the CD PHE didn't do. They just were making assumptions of where it was coming from. We're actually figuring out where it's coming. Um, we're doing sampling, um, April and March and April, we didn't collect data last year. We are a little bit behind. And what's really important about that is you get a, a stream variability because of the decreased flows in these stream concentrations. So the less flows you have, the higher concentrations you have. And so with the irrigation coming on, we want to know what that looked like. So we did March and April sampling. And then what we're going to be looking at is April through December um, sampling. And the really cool thing about this is USGS is actually doing a contribution. Uh, they're doing twenty thousand dollars contribution and they're also doing um, MST markers as pro bono. They're really helping us out. They're said, this is a really cool program. We want to see where this is gonna go. This is the right um, place for others to kind of take the roadmap into doing this. And then additionally, we have other partners besides our MS four marker partners. And um, that's the Grand Valley Cooperative Fund. And that is a lot of our irrigators and agriculture. And so they're contributing another twenty thousand dollars. So that's reduced the requirements for the MS four um, and what we're continuing um, to look at for the water quality. I feel like the water quality is a very important piece. Um, we're going to continue uh, water sampling in the future. And so I think it's really important that we include this in our budgets every single year. And um, so Fruta is right now with a TMDL, the MOG is at ten percent. Um, and this slide wasn't updated, sorry, because it, uh, this just changed last week. I um, I feel like I need a panhandle for money for TMDLs everywhere I go. Um, so the contribution from fruit is actually going to be sixty five hundred instead of eighty five. So it's a big difference. This is um, the sampling sites. If you ever want to go out and sample with the USGS, they're always looking for volunteer cares to go out into these stream segments. Um, I've gone with them a few times and it's been a lot of fun. Um, and then I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much uh, for the update. Questions?
I have a couple. So is Mesa County, are we just in the mix of, of being looked at within the state or are we being picked, picked out and, and guinea pig or just?
So it, when they have their TMDLs, they have a low and a high um, when they go through their roadmap. And E. coli is one of the top um, one of the top things that they're trying to pick out and get this resolved. Because they worry about um, children playing in the water. Um, we've brought Barbara Bennett out here who wrote our TMDL and said, I'm pretty sure if a child is playing in this stream segment, they're getting torn up by the tamarisk and the Russian olives. Um, but specifically E. coli is getting looked at by the state and they're ranking those as a higher priority.
So um, how many counties are being looked at to have TMDLs?
That's a great question. And I don't know the answer to that, but I know Bear Creek in Lakewood is getting a TMDL. Um, and that includes Jefferson County and um, Pueblo also, I think is getting the TMDL and Colorado is.
Our last question is just, so what, what attracted the USGS to be excited about what versus other?
So I actually approached them or, and we wanted to get more information. We had large data gaps from what the CD PHE was showing as the data. Um, they had data that was twenty years old and we said, wait, we have things that have happened in the valley. We have a lot of good things. We have irrigators that are going through and piping drainages and ditches so that um, that irrigation water isn't seeping into the ground and causing more of a selenium rise. And they weren't looking at more data. And so when they first did the data, uh, they first went out and sampled. We thought we need to continue with this. And then I said, well, let's, is there microbial tracking? And they said, yes, we can do that too. And they're they're the teachers of the water quality and they know how to collect data and they know what they're doing when they're looking at data. And I'm not the person to go out and collect that. I'm I disagree with that. So I want them to do it. They know what they're doing.
Has the USGS helped other of the communities that you mentioned with their water issues?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, but I know other communities have called me and said, why are you using the USGS? And just said they're, they're one of the best. And I could hire another company to do it, but they're, that's what they do.
I mean, that was a good choice.
The sixty five hundred, is that in twenty twenty four or is that going to be in twenty twenty five? Okay.
I would suggest in twenty twenty five, we continue to look at budgets and continue budget for water sampling. I want to go to the, the CD PHE and say, here you go. Here's all of this data and none of it is pinpointing it towards what you're saying that the MS four is contributing. So we need to change the background loading to whether it's natural or whether it's agricultural or whether there's other sources that they haven't considered. But we're the only ones that have a permit. And so they're, we're the only ones that they can say, okay, now you get to do something about it because you have it. Nobody else has it.
So we should anticipate this some sort of cost in perpetuity? Okay.
We have a budget item for that, Shannon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council. Um, right now, the sixty five hundred is unbudgeted. Um, we do have a line item in our non-departmental program of the general fund that we budget thirty nine thousand dollars for our stormwater permit. And we paid to the county, but the sixty five hundred, um, we'd have to come back either through the contingency budget process, which that's what that, um, those funds are for, anything that's unexpected um, throughout the year, or we could do a supplemental um, at a later date. We also have had legal expenses associated with the appeals as well. I'd have to look at the total number. I want to say twenty to twenty five thousand dollars um, last year for some of the appeal, but the sixty five hundred was not part of this budget. Um, so with um, kind of the sampling, we wanted to bring Carrie in front of you and just to give you a heads up about that expense.
It's the Grand Valley Fund. David Payne has been, there is a caveat of the, them contributing funds as long as all of the MS four partners contribute. They want to make sure that everybody's on board. So um,
So far, that's looking good.
Oh, yeah.
You may have, oh, sorry. You may have answered this already, but what prompted this in the first place? Or what, why, why did it get on their radar?
We've been on their radar. They have what's called a three oh three D list. And not to bore you with it, but you can look at the website and look at all of the stream segments in Colorado. And then you can click on them and see what's, but we've been on the three oh three D list for, since I started with Mesa County. Um, I think it's been much longer than that. But the E. coli, they're really worried about human contact. They're really worried about child's play with the water. And that's why they're most worried about it.
And there's no differentiation between the water? The, the body of water at all, it sounds like. Okay. Thank you.
I know this has been a tremendous amount of work, a lot of going back and forth and frustration. For lack of a better term, so thank you. All right. Any other questions? Again, thank you very much.
Being here.
Thanks, Kimberly. I just want to add that a special thanks to Carrie and the other partners because City Fruta could not do this on their own. So Carrie's efforts and continued work with the other agencies has been really appreciated.
Well, I'd like to uh, thank you for your forward thought um, on a lot of it. It looks like you had a very great approach. If you, we didn't have you at the helm, I bet I think we would be approaching this a lot different. Thanks, Carrie. That's a great, you've done a great job.
You don't want to stick around? Yeah, I know.
Have a good night.
This could make the public participation section quickly. All right. Next, we're going to move ahead into the public participation section. This section is set aside.
What a cute little audience.
This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue and will not take an official action under the section of the agenda. Please limit your comments to a three-minute period. Is there anybody that would like to participate? Nope. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close public participation. Did you record that?
I'm like, I'm ready with my timer, like my first, my first official timing. I get to do it.
Sorry. All right. Next, we're gonna move into consent agenda. These are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed upon. Two are met prior to the time they come before council for final actions. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council members. Uh, and members of council may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent agenda will then be approved. Just as a reminder, a member of council may vote no on any specific item without asking that they be removed from the consent agenda for full discussion. Any items that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the regular agenda. So uh, got a question on this. Because of timing uh, with items on the consent agenda, we're allowed to break it into two. Can, can we do uh, items A through, or does it make sense to do items A through D as one? Since Andrea and Rich can't vote on it?
You, you can, you can do all of them and then they can vote recusing themselves of those two items. So all as one.
Okay. So we'll just do it all as one. All right. So uh, we need, is there anybody that would like to pull something off or discuss anything on the agenda? All right. Well, then I'll be the one. Um, so for discussion on the agenda, on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve uh, regarding the municipal code regarding garbage and solid waste. I think there's some confusion on that, which I just wanted to bring up. Which is, I did not read it as you had to have the trash can uh, on the street. And so it was a little ambiguous, uh, there's a little bit of ambiguity there uh, in terms of how that would read. And also I didn't, uh, I thought there was some ambiguity that um, about that the trash can had to be received from the city itself. Okay. So.
Yeah, um, yeah, Mayor Bremen had reached out to me, mentioned that. Um, I let him know and let all of you know that this is just calling for the hearing. So we will, we'll, it's simple to clarify both of those a little more specifically. So there is no ambiguity. And then uh, that'll be on uh, the agenda on June fourth, when you receive it for second reading.
And the second question I had on the consent agenda was concerning the uh, contract, the multi-year agreement. And you're not getting away that easily. Um, I know we were getting a discount for prepayment. But I did not see what that discount was.
Yeah. So by signing the five-year agreement with Brownsville, we will get approximately a ten percent savings. So right around twenty thousand dollar savings.
Right. And I, I did ask, is lightning uh, considered an act of God or not? Um, and it apparently is.
It is. Uh, I spoke. I spoke with representatives from Brownsville and they assured us that in developing the SCADA system and building it, they, they build it with recovery, uh, disaster recovery in mind. So this system is going to a cloud system. So if lightning were to strike at the plant, which all of our buildings and our systems are uh, grounded, including some of the PVC or the PLCs. Um, the, the most that would happen with the SCADA system would be that we could lose a couple of computers. But all of the data, all of the system itself, because it's stored in the cloud, would be safe from a lightning event.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bremen, if I could just add, um, we just did the supplemental budget appropriation for the SCADA contract. And the one benefit of going with the upfront cost is that since we're using um, federal dollars from the American Rescue Plan, we have leftover savings. We actually have to appropriate those dollars for use by the end of this year and then actually use them by twenty twenty six per the federal guideline. So since we have those one-time dollars, we thought this was an appropriate project to use. Um, and we get that uh, ten percent savings for it as well. So definitely a benefit. Thank you.
And this is my last item on the agenda.
That's you.
And what, uh, how much of that? That grant money, how much was that grant money that you're referring to?
Uh, it'll pay for a hundred percent of this.
So city council, I think the beginning of May, we appropriated uh, two hundred thousand um, of American Rescue Plan dollars just for this project. Um, so yeah, with the ten percent savings and paying for the five-year term upfront, we can use our federal dollars instead of having to use sewer fund revenues in general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on items on the? All right.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
First and second, any other discussion? All right, Deb.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
I'm not quite sure how I vote.
But before you vote, if you'll just say, uh, I am recusing myself from items A through D. And then you can vote.
I'm recruiting myself from items A through D. Yay.
Thank you. Counselor Stolarczyk.
I'm recusing myself from items A through D and yes.
Thank you. Counselor Miller. And Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So after the consent agenda, um, I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge the honor, gonna totally mess this up. Uh, Minapella. So to uh, her appointment of the Arts and Culture Board. Uh, I did call her and let her know that she was appointed. So she's excited to be on it. So thank you. All right. With that, uh, Mike, you are up.
Thank you. Give me just a second here to be able to share my content.
Talk to the IT department.
He's just such a.
I can do it again. I'll crazily gone.
All right. Uh.
Mike gets ready.
Yeah, thank you. Super helpful. Uh, thank you, uh, mayor, members of council. Before I get started, want to give you a couple of updates on the purpose of tonight's presentation and then upcoming presentations at upcoming city council meetings. So essentially as we prepare for strategic planning in August of this year, and we'll, we'll be working on date coordination and things like that, uh, with, with all of you soon. Uh, as the mayor and I work together on, on planning some of those events. We, uh, plan and typically do this after each election every even year where we provide a number of updates and overviews, uh, to provide some context to take into account. It's not all that needs to be taken into account in strategic planning, as there may be some, um, creative ideas and things that would, that are not part of these. But these are long-term plans essentially that have been, have come either from an operational standpoint, a capital planning process, or the engagement of the community in long-term 10-year plus plans. So, uh, tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to spend a ton of time more orient you of where some things are. I know a lot of you are very familiar with that. We talked about it during even candidate orientation. Uh, and then also, uh, I'll, so I'll talk about the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan. And then our planning and development director, Dan Karas, is going to come up and he's going to go do a little bit more thorough overview of the land use code. Uh, after I finish. So this isn't, this isn't the typical just quick 10 minute presentation, but it won't be terribly long. But, um, there's a lot to cover. There's a lot to cover with, with these major plans. And then at upcoming council meetings, we'll have an overview of the Parks Health Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan, which is Frost. We'll have an, uh, update and overview of the multimodal, uh, circulation plan and our capital improvement plan. So, uh, those, those will be coming up at the workshop this month. Um, we will also have a presentation, uh, at our next meeting and in addition to Frost with, about communications, engagement and tourism. And then in the future, we will also have, and these all go through, basically go through June, um, uh, the meetings in June, but spread out on different agendas. And then we will have a, uh, wastewater capital maintenance, maintenance, and then the modeling of plan. So this, this is how we look at pricing and things like that, but also the, the multitude of projects that, um, of new projects and then maintenance projects to maintain a wastewater reclamation facility. We'll also go over the 2021 community survey results. Our next community survey, uh, we do those every four years will be next year. So we'll actually be preparing for it this year so that it can go out early in, uh, 2025. And then, uh, so we want you to kind of see what that survey looks like. So you can be thinking about if there's additional questions. There's a lot of questions. We asked the same so that we can compare across the country and compare to ourselves. But there's also opportunity to add, um, there's always some unique questions related to the time and, and things that are going on. And then we're going to have an update on contractual partnership. This is something new, uh, but contractual partnerships that the city has and city-owned land and facilities. Uh, definitely want you as the council to be aware of, um, the multitude of, um, partnerships and contracts and, uh, holdings that we, that we have as an organization. And then an events overview. So we're going to go over events at the June workshop where you can, where we have, where we show you all the events that we do have, uh, which ones are city-run, which ones are city-sponsored but outside run and then outside, uh, events, which ones have major closures, which ones do not. Uh, and those types of things so that we can have some context about where we're at with events before we talk in our strategic planning about the future of events and things like that. Um, so tonight, uh, getting to the, uh, strategic plan, if you go on the website, I pulled these tabs up. So just in case the signal was a little off, um, but when you go, when you go to city hall, the dropdown right under city council is to City of Fruta Strategic Plan. Uh, the page opens up here with an overview. You can, um, I can zoom in a little bit on this, uh, diagram. That really helps identify how all this works together, right? So we have the comprehensive plan. We updated that in 2020 after a full year of 2019. Some of you heard me say this so many times, but we're truly proud of, you know, having over 4,000 of our residents engage, actively engaged through exercises to help us identify what's in our comprehensive plan, which is how we grow, where we grow, what our community values are and, and making sure that all the, all the subsidiary master plans and our land use code, um, are policies or rules or laws or processes that should be achieving those values and, and those, uh, pieces that came from the comprehensive plan. We had over 40 in-person engagements. We had, uh, a number of online opportunities and surveys during that year period of 2019. We were in churches. We were in schools. We were, we went to various community groups. We also invited people, uh, in. And we, when we had for a number of weeks in the entryway of the, uh, Fruta Community Center, an opportunity for people to engage, um, where we have, you know, close 400 or so people a day. So, um, that was, that was a great effort. Um, it also gives us a lot of confidence in the feedback we had. Large cities are pretty thrilled when they have two to 3,000. So to be, and I, I mean, as large as Grand Junction. I've talked, you know, places like Arvada that are even larger than Grand Junction. Um, you know, when they get 3,000, they're, they're feeling pretty good with that engagement. So when we only have under 6,000 households and we have that much representation, we feel, we felt great about that. Um, the strategic plan. So if you look at this, you got the comprehensive plan, 10-year plus plan, tons of goals, tons of, you know, values, all these things. It also includes our future land use map. And that has a, has a huge impact on decisions that are made within the city. We actually brought that land use. Um, we, we brought the future land use, future growth area. We, we've made it smaller. We brought it in a little bit. We took out, uh, some future land growth. Um, and we also, um, every, all of our infrastructure decisions are based on the future land use area, which is about a half mile or so around the current Fruta boundaries or, or Fruta city limits. And anytime something develops within that future land, uh, that future, uh, growth area, they have to, they annex into the city, which means that they have to develop per city standards and not county standard. So now that's, we don't force that upon them in any way. That's when somebody chooses, somebody comes in, we want, want to buy property there. Want to turn it into a subdivision and things like that. So our infrastructure, we have to, cities have those because otherwise what would happen is what sometimes people think is happening. Oh, this growth is just happening. It's occurring. And how are we going to sustain it with our infrastructure? Well, our wastewater reclamation facility is about 70% or, uh, sorry. It's, it's just under 50% uh, capacity. And, uh, under half, uh, and, uh, I don't know where 70 came from right there, but, uh, so we are under half capacity. And so we, we look at it from an aspect of if you went to the fullest density, which isn't always chosen in all development. Um, and we have a lot of subdivisions that are still coming in. You can get up to eight units per acre, but some are still coming in at four and, and five and things like that. So, um, with those, with that type of growth, uh, we'd be able to sus- sustain, you know, with the infrastructure we have. And as you know, each how, each residence that's constructed pays a fee for expanded road use, expanded sewer use and expanded park use. So that's to help pay for those expanded impacts on our community. So all the development along 19th Road has been planned for multiple decades and in Fruta and, and investment into the wastewater reclamation facility was planned even longer than I've been here almost 10 years and it was long before that. So this is, this is not new. It's not a surprise. Um, and that's why we're doing things like taking those impact fees, taking our fund balance and widening 19th Road, a section of it later this fall. So the comp plan has a lot. You can't do all of 10-year plus in one year or two years. So every two years we, uh, strategic plan and, and make sure we boil down, what are we going to focus on? It's not just what's in the comp plan, but it's definitely taking so that we're making progress. And, and how are we going, what are we going to focus on in the next two to four years? And then every two years we update that. We'll be doing that in the August, around the August timeframe this year. After we updated the comprehensive plan, we updated all the, the master plans. They're all the ones in the box here as, that I've mentioned earlier. And then you have the survey results, not, not necessarily a master plan, but we kind of grouped that in there. All that feedback comes into the city council strategic plan. Uh, and then that is what we use to dive down into what are the operational aspects that we have to make sure are in the budget each year to keep maintenance up, to keep the, the services we provide up. And then that comes into recommendations to the city council each year, beginning at the end of September and ending at the first meeting in December as our, our budget process wi- in the public sphere. We're already started internally, uh, preparing for those recommendations to you all. We also, so, so we have to have that strategic plan for that and a lot of feedback from council before we bring recommendations back to you. And, um, it also goes into our capital improvement plan that we'll talk about at the workshop this month. So when you look at, uh, when you're in this, you can see there's a lot of links in the, in, in there. You can go straight to the comprehensive plan. You can go to each of the master plans that are all found on our website. First, I'm going to, I just wanted to point out the, when you click on the actual strategic plan. Sorry about this. Let me just scroll all the way back. The document looks like this. You see the same introduction that's on the, oof, on the, that's on the webpage. It has a little bit more about where this comes from. So if someone's just reading the strategic plan, it's going to, it's going to link them back to our comprehensive plan, to our community values, our organizational values. The next page gets into what's in our comprehensive plan that really focuses on, hey, we exist to provide core services. That's why we exist as an organization. Nobody else does the sewer sidewalks, roads. Um, you know, those types of course or police, um, all the parks. So we do that as a community, but we want to have an impact on the quality of place, economic health and lifestyle of the community. And those are defined. They actually preceded the comprehensive plan, but we put them through the process to see if they would stick and, and, and they did. And then you've got this at a glance. We're not going to go through the rest of the document, but it's on the, you can always reference this. Um, but I wanted to just show real quick the fact that we have, uh, the projects in the strategic or the efforts in the strategic plan are, are follow these, those three strategic areas, right? And after this page, you have a page for every effort and every, every project. Um, so just kind of orienting especially, especially our newer council members, uh, to understand, uh, where this is and where it's found. What I want to highlight real quick is if you look down the list of 2023 projects and 2024, um, most of these are complete or they are being completed, uh, this year. Or, um, so for example, Pine Street Bridge. Fortunately, we, uh, the, uh, well, we don't need to dwell on that one anymore. Um, the public safety, those efforts, uh, the chief was recently here and gave you updates. That was really focused on the community policing, stepping up our proactive, uh, police work, which is why you've seen those numbers grow. We've talked about that a number of times. Uh, so we've been achieving that. Uh, and the rest is engagement and we have increased the engagement events. The chief went through those. We struggled a bit only because we had, we had a position we wanted, wanted to dedicate that, but until very recently where we fully staffed. And so that caused a little bit of blips in some of that. But we still were able to add a number of, um, engagement events that the chief covered in his recent update. So we're continuing on that. Being in, being an employer of choice has been an effort that's, that you all have really supported. Not from retention efforts, our cultural efforts within the internal, uh, organization. Our, uh, our competitive market pay efforts and trying to keep up with inflation, which has made that a little more challenging, obviously, uh, over the last few years and, uh, maintaining the benefit level that, that we have for employees. And then, uh, communication and engagement, uh, you'll hear more updates on that at, at an upcoming meeting that you're, I, I think, hopefully, I think everybody's felt and seen the tremendous efforts, uh, led by, uh, Ciara and her team and things that we've been able to add. And we continue, we continually add and have, have more to be adding in the, in that realm. And then the, obviously we have the electrical charging stations already installed and they're, they're used on a daily basis. We have, uh, middle mile broadband is, is, will be completed, uh, this summer from, from the standpoint of working with region 10. Uh, and that's the middle mile. And then we'll still be pushing the, we still want to see the provider that has come, uh, get started on the south side of Fruta. They're, they have told us that they plan to do that in, uh, the winter timeframe. Uh, but we want to stay on them and, and we don't have anything to make of them do that. Uh, and we, it's, it's available for multiple providers to come in, but we're really working with the current provider to make sure that, try and make sure that happens as well as upgrading our, uh, city fiber ring with all of our facilities. Um, so that's nearing completion. You can see economic development efforts. Uh, we've been in a series of MOU and, uh, approvals. We have the chamber coming up, uh, at the workshop this month. I'll go over a draft with you as they're going over a draft with the chamber board and then we'll get that MOU, uh, secured within a month or so after that. Um, and that'll be the last one that we identified with the ED partners, having done GJEPS, uh, Grand Junction Economic Partnership and the Business Incubator Center. Also with those economic development efforts, they've been highly focused on like, uh, the Mulberry, uh, economic development deal and the launch, the Riverfront, um, Riverfront Development Public Private Partnership, which we are getting close to bringing that, um, public private partnership, uh, to, to kick that off for the next phase. So, uh, that'll be something this summer as well. And then, uh, as you can, as you're well aware, we've got the, a lot going on with housing. Uh, we, we did create the housing authority. We created the first housing partnership and we'll, we'll be working on this year, a second housing partnership, um, most likely with, uh, trying to get rent, rent reduced at the project that's, uh, will be next to La Quinta if we're successful with, um, some of the state and federal, um, funding sources we're looking at. Bike park improvements were completed in 2022. Obviously, as if you, as you go down 2024, uh, 19th Road design acquisition and construction begins this, this fall. Uh, with the bids are, we do have the bid process out. So if you remember, we did our best estimate at the time. But then once design was completed and we put the bid packages out, we'll find out what it really costs. Um, when that bid process finishes and then we'll be coming back to you to discuss, you know, what those results were and getting that off the ground this fall after irrigation is turned off. And then although there has been work in preparation for that going on. And then South Mesa Street improvements, this is a challenging one. This is one where we, excuse me, we had, uh, designed years ago with a Department of Local Affairs grant. We received a grant a few years ago from, uh, Colorado Department of Transportation. That's, um, I think it's, is it 1.7 million? Uh, so it was a significant grant. However, when you work with C dot, uh, funds, there's a lot more requirements that come into play and they wanted a redesign, uh, and, and so it's been going under that redesign and going through the C dot process. First off, I should, I failed to mention for those of you that are new, once we received that, we were awarded the grant. We didn't receive the contract for over a year later. So there's been some significant delays in getting this project off the ground to be able to use those, you know, 1.7 million dollar funds, which we're grateful for. It's definitely helpful. Um, but that's, that project will finish, likely finish towards the end of the year, going through the C dot approval process. And, but it'll be a project that's in construction at the earliest next year. So that, that's kind of where that one is. And then, uh, the, obviously the plaza, the Reed Park will finish up this summer. It's, it's on track, looking really well. We created the dog park and opened that up. We did just add some amenities and we have the giant big dinosaur bone coming, uh, or on order. So there's more amenities to come. And then, uh, 2025, you see a little salt wash park design and expansion. Um, that will be something we're talking with you all, these 2025 and these future, we've got to talk when we're doing, uh, strategic planning. So Highway 340, uh, Trail Connection, we also received a small C dot grant. They wanted a redesign. They wanted a redesign. Prices are coming back after that much higher than than what we did. So we're going to have to have some conversations on that one. And the other two big pedestrian crosswalks, obviously, the I 70 on and off ramp and crossing is a, it's a C dot project, not a city project. So that's going to take a big effort of just getting that through a long term, multi-year process. The high school, high school pedestrian crosswalk would be something we would be more, we would have to work with C dot. But it would not be one they would, they would be doing. So we would, we would have to work on that. So future expansion of the community center, we have office space that was added this year or being added. And then we have the new slide. But their future expansions will have to be tied to some other things we'll be looking at as a group as we need to do a pretty comprehensive facility, study of all facilities and looking at what the long term opportunities or challenges are with various facilities that the city has. So that, so those are some things that we definitely need to tackle or or discuss and timing in addition to new pieces and pieces that come out of these plans. So that was a lot on that. If you go into the comp plan, just real quick, the way this, you know, this can, I don't know why they're at the end, even though they're at the beginning of the start. But as you go in a few pages, you see all the chapters. This is probably not keeping up with me, so I'll slow down. Talks about the community values. These are statements and the reason they're statements is because there are answers to questions of the public on what it means to not lose the small town feel as we grow, which is incredibly important with policymaking. It's incredibly important with land use code updates. It's incredibly important with any of our ordinances or or anything we do really. Because if we, we can't lose sight of these, because it helps shape some of the reasoning we do things. And if we, if we forget about them, then we could stray from what the what the public hopes to see. The nice thing is, obviously, everybody can answer that question differently. But collectively, these were the things that really stood out from the community. Obviously, as a planned vision. And then it reiterates the strategic areas that I mentioned earlier. And then when you get to this page, you can see the themes and the chapters. So the chapters are broken down into land use and growth, economic development. We'll say Frost for short here, transportation, infrastructure, education, arts and culture. And then there's these overriding themes that have quite a bit of meaning as well. So efficient development, which has really led a lot of changes we've done over the last few years. And Dan's gonna hit, touch on specifics in the land use code. This community first tourism, second mantra that really reshaped how we were doing tourism and then thriving downtown connectivity and strategic economic development. As you go through the plan, every chapter and every section has action items or goals that are that we are seeking to try and accomplish in in a 10 year period. There's always the possibility that some of those pieces over the the way times change or what it becomes extremely important to the community and to the city council. You all, we always have to be adaptable. We have to. And so there could be some of those as we take bite sizes of the 10 year plan every time we strategic plan that aren't in the priority for the next two to four years. And maybe that priority could change. But if you have plenty of time and you want to go somewhere else, you can, at the bottom of the page of the strategic plan, there is a link to our scorecard. And our scorecard looks like this. We'll be doing another update most likely in July. We typically do these in in that January, July timeframe of updating these. Obviously, this is too small to read. But the, and but the point I wanted to make with this is this document has every action item in our 10 year plus comprehensive plan. And some of these are, have changed because, you know, we did this in January and we've been working since January. But the nice thing is it's broken up by all the chapters in the comprehensive plan. So when you're in, when you're, when we're in our our actual spreadsheet, we have tabs for every chapter. This is a PDF that we put on the website. And what you can see is you can see if it's completed or done, that's in green. If it's not started at all, that's in red. If it's ongoing, and ongoing's not a cop out. It's it's a, that's typically tied to efforts. So if it's like, we need to, we, you know, we need to make sure we are maintaining something. That's not a one time thing and then check, we're done. It means we have to continually do it, make sure we're, we're funding our annual budget effectively to maintain, you know, this property or this park or this equipment or whatever it is. And then in progress are just is in progress. So it's something that we're, it's not complete, but it is actively being worked on. Again, not started doesn't mean it's bad. It's just you can't do it all, all of 10 at the beginning. So we are four years in. And what I'd like you to notice is like on land use, you can see a lot of done. And and so we, we, it doesn't mean we are done, but there are some in progress. There are some things Dan's gonna mention that we need to tackle this year as well. As you go into Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation has a lot of those ongoing types of things because it's a, the emphasis in Parks and Recreation is there's some new things we need to do, but we gotta take care of everything we already have. And so there's a lot of ongoing maintenance type things. So you'll see that. And then there's a lot in progress, as you are well aware. We already talked about some of those projects going on. And then we've definitely completed some of the the big ones as well that were policy related. And then services and infrastructure, this is another, obviously, you can see a ton of ongoing because it's really maintenance based when it's talking, when you're talking about streets, sewer sidewalks, those types of things. And then transportation, just as a glimpse. So anyway, education, arts, culture, obviously, this is not to dive into the many, but I want you to be aware that that's something you can look through. I want you to, as we prepare for strategic planning, know that these are some some tools you can look at. If you get questions from people, you can let them know that if they go to the strategic plan tab under city council, it can lead them and to an endless array of information, right? That's, that's pretty important. I think at that point, just want to make sure. The only thing I'd like to say to that is this is a huge team effort. Really proud of our department directors. Shannon and Ciara plays a huge role in the strategic plan as well. And she's, she's the one that actually helps put it together in a in a viewable format, helps me follow up and Jennifer following up with all the directors and the teams to update these every January and in July. But more importantly, it's, this is the stuff that we talk about day in and day out to make sure that we are staying on course and and accomplishing what, what you have given a direction of and 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 set goals for. So these are good tools in preparation for the strategic planning. And one of the biggest things that came out of the comprehensive plan was to update our land use code. And for those of you that were part of that, you may remember, we did contract with a, an outside group that that provided some expertise. They created these wonderful visuals that show like what the old code, and it's in our code. So old code to new code in various chapters. And Dan's gonna cover a little bit about taking the feedback from the comprehensive plan, making these changes in the land use code and then what those changes resulted in. Because what we're thrilled about is that immediate proof of concept that came from changes in the land use code. Don't always get that. It's hard to get policy, I mean, policy, it's hard to get it right. Or, you know, there's so many ways to do things. And those of you that went through the update to the land use code and some of you, all of you have maybe seen even recently, some changes that have occurred that were in the old code and in the old future land use plan that just never played out, right? These commercial nodes, you know, and neighborhoods kind of throughout the city. It never really worked because we're too small, like from a, from a standpoint. If you can drive or walk, you know, to the, to the business sectors, it's going to be hard for a business to want to just plop themselves, you know, over by a neighborhood. So a lot of those have come through policy change to to be developed as as residential. All right, Dan, I'll take any questions if you have any. But I think this is all pretty straightforward for us to be, but happy to take any.
What does ongoing mean that it's a cop out? Is that what I hear?
Love it. Well played. Well, well played. That's great. Look at those ongoings a little deeper. Kimberly. All right.
Please keep on going.
You're the IT junior.
Boy scout.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dan Karas. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Fruta. And today we are going to go into a deep dive into the 2021 Land Use Code update that we did just directly on the heels of the comp plan update. And so I think what would be particularly interesting for not only the new council members, but just everybody is, you know, kind of touching on sort of how we got to where we're at, how we implement the comp plan through the land use code, like some of the specific things that we modified that were, I would say, fairly sizable shifts from what the last 20 years of 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 land use codes have contemplated. We made some changes to basic definitions like accessory dwelling units. We started regulating short term rentals. We tweaked lot coverage and side and front setbacks. And in our residential zone districts, our commercial zone districts. I mean, it was, I mean, I wouldn't consider it to be something where we like threw the old code out, but definitely was a little bit of a U turn. And we started doing things, I think, from a slightly different perspective, which was really exciting for for me. You know, obviously, at this point in time, I'd been at the City of Fruta for a couple of years. You know, it's always fun to come and work for a pro planning community that adopts their comp plan through their ordinances, which are their set of laws on how things are regulated and developed in the city. And and so we got an opportunity to make a lot of tweaks. And I think we've really seen a lot of direct benefits from those changes. But one thing that that Mike mentions but didn't mention this evening, which I think is really important, is when we went into this process, we did a rolling adoption. So we didn't write the whole code and try and present it to you in an evening and say, what do you think? Here's like 450 pages of land use regulations. Like we took it sort of piece by piece. And and then at the end, kind of tied a bow on it. And we'd already been living with some of those changes. So we saw some kind of fast paced results. But one of the, one of the main things that Jessica Garo from Design Workshop, who was our sort of prime on the code rewrite, we wanted to contemplate the idea of not trying to regulate things from not happening, but how to, how to regulate things so they can happen. And the whole document, I think, is, kind of speaks to that perspective. And that's, that's how we approached this project. And I think that's why we got a lot of traction from the then council and have had sustained traction from future councils and this present council on not going back on a lot of the things that that we've made modifications to. So just for a quick little, you know, pit stop on what I think changed big time with these plan themes. Certainly, the efficient development, everybody knows this, that's in the planning world, which, you know, don't join us. Like, it's a, it's a lonely crowd. But you never really want to like push sprawl. You don't want to push edge growth. Like, you really want to create rules that allow a lot of flexibility. Homes in the downtown turning into commercial buildings like Best Slope and Chesnick Realty and the like. And you also want to maximize those land uses in that prescribed area. So it can, it can be much more like than than we've seen in the past. So one of the things we did is we really upzoned the downtown mixed use zone district, which is what created a lot of the development that's happened on Mulberry. Like those things previously were not allowed to be, to be done in the downtown mixed use zone by right. They had to go through a formal approval process through planning commission and council. The, the second thing is like a big time push on a thriving downtown. Just statistically speaking, we had a perceived density, so units per acre in the downtown that was about four units per acre. And that was mirrored by our community residential source suburban neighborhoods, also four dwelling units an acre. Pretty unhealthy for, you know, the core of your community to have the same perceived densities as the, as the edge of your community. So made some pretty sizable shifts from that with lot coverage and with changes of use. Connectivity, we've all kind of divorced ourselves from the, in the planning world from these mile by mile or half mile by mile roadways. So like paper, maple, these just straight runs. So we break up the the local road sections every 600 feet in the new codes. So they either have a radius to them or a curvature. So you don't have these just kind of like straight runways. We kind of saw that Brandon Drives, a great example of that in Brandon Estates. Some other neighborhoods have just some straight runways in them. So you'll see like a lot of our design, like Copper Creek and Iron Wheel. They have a lot of curvature in the roadway to slow people down in those residential areas to try and bring more of a, of a neighborhood vibe to it. And then obviously, Mike went into the strategic development opportunities that we've been pursuing. And certainly, a lot of the, the code changes that we've made afford quite a bit of opportunity for our redevelopment at the Riverfront to take place. And it essentially has a little bit of a blank slate with with regards to future land use, which we are not allowed to do by law, which is just go in like spot zone, a property that doesn't have a future land use to it. So we create a lot of opportunity for the launch to be able to be what it's going to become by, you know, thinking, you know, a few years back that we might want to take that on and and try and develop that with a private partner. So these were the specific goals that that I believe are being implemented in the code by the comprehensive plan. The other thing, just a quick stop here, the, the land use code is, i- is essentially the law of the land. And so the code itself is 57 chapters and it skips every other chapter. But it in, it, it's informal, but it's by reference. It adopts all of these sort of master plans as Mike speaks to them. So we have a Parks and Rec, a chapter in the code. We have a transportation planning section in the code. It adopts our latest and greatest circulation plan. It adopts like the C dot construction specifications manual, which is for all of the land uses that are along 6 and 50. It adopts their access control plan. I mean, this is really boring, but like it does all these things. It's pretty insane. And it adopts the circulation plan. It gives us the ability to levy impact fees. I mean, it's, so it's more than just like, how far can your house be from the street? Like it, it's, it's a pretty all encompassing set of sort of regulatory schemes that has to speak to so many different disciplines. And that's why you see a lot of entities constantly be tweaking this, which is okay. I mean, it's not like something's broken. It's just that it, it contemplates a lot of different things. So we previously had a review process that was fairly complex and intertwined. It had essentially, everything went to city council and planning commission. And there were percentages of adjustments and number of lots that were created that would all constitute having to go to planning commission and council. And so we simplified it in in this code rewrite where everybody's got to go through the same process unless it's an annexation, a rezone or a PUD. And that goes to planning commission, council. And then the one off is the conditional use permits, which just go to planning commission. Otherwise, everything goes through just this process, which is really simplified. I think the way that a lot of small businesses interact with our, our land use code because like we do have some pros that are in the, in the commercial and multifamily and residential space. So you can kind of just make it as complex as you want and they'll figure it out eventually. But this helps our small businesses understand how they're going to interact with our, our set of regulations. So I like that we took a, a great stab at like trying to simplify this for for those. Here's a, a specific section within the land development code that we made a, a, a pretty Here's a a specific section within the land development code that we made a a pretty sizable change to, which allows applicants to come to the planning commission and council in a joint body through a sketch plan. It's not a public hearing. You don't have people come and 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 give their feedback. It just gives them an opportunity to pitch ideas to you. So you've seen one happen like that, which is Launch has had several interactions with the council and planning commission, but also most recently Geodot Flats. So a little bit of a less pressure pressured environment for applicants to come in and pitch a creative idea.
Hey, Dan, if I could, sorry to interrupt real quick. One of the things I I think that's good to point out, and I I think it's fine, bros, to be honest, that we, the City of Fruta, did not have a good reputation when it came to the development process. It was long, it was tedious, and it cost more money and it took a lot of time. And then that was from the developer side. From the residential side, there was a lot of discontent that we learned about through the updates of what the results were. You know, things are starting to look like cookie cutter. Things were not getting variety. We're not being able to see some of the newer exteriors and some of the newer efficiency standpoints in housing and things like that. So I think, you know, sometimes we we get focused on, we have a lot of internal focus on making sure the process is is predictable, that it's smooth, that that if if you are meeting what is in this land use code, it shouldn't take extra time because you're already doing what we we've asked you to do. But on the flip side, it's it's also trying to achieve results of what our community wants to see with development, whether it's residential or commercial. And I just I I was just thinking about that as you as you as you talked about those before you get in some of these examples, but thanks.
Yeah, the, I mean, one of the other shifts, then it's in a later slide, is we used to just have a set of criteria for everything. And now, as as Mike was speaking to you, we have standards for residential subdivisions, for the urban core, for our commercial zone districts and for industrial. And so it's less of that like broad brush stroke and more of a like kind of targeted approach to like how we want to see things develop and what flexibilities are baked into that. But the the subdivision section was the section that probably received the most tweaks since the codification in October of 21 to present day. We had some some numerical caps on the number of lots that were generated that could be administratively approved versus the ones that had to go through the public hearing process. We've since just gone all administrative for the residential zone districts. So if you're if you're in community residential or any of the memorialized zoning classifications, you just go through the administrative process, which is a pre-application meeting, an application submission, a determination of completion completeness. And then it institutes a a review period and then a decision date by a specified specified number of days that are that's codified in the code. So you've seen some of these developments just happen. Obviously, the, you know, you, everybody gets legally noticed and like we post the site and do the legal notice in the paper. But Orchard Ridge and West Canyon, which is that vacant lot that's at Ottley and Pine, that's at the southeast corner, that is going to break ground in June. Your Estates, which is the property that's on Pine, Carl Peterson's old place, is going to break ground here in the next, I think, on the 20th of this month. That's a nine-lot subdivision. And Sycamore Estates on Paper and Weston Estates is still in the review process, but those are all being reviewed administratively. And so we're generating a lot more paper lots than we used to, which I think is, you know, the point that Mike's trying to make is that, you know, we're we're, we've made some some changes that have created inventory and created inventory in a sustained pipeline that obviously has market connections to it, but they don't have to continually go back through the review process, which I think is part of the the savviness in that approach.
Can I ask a quick question about that? When in those instances do the public, does the public get to have any, you know, the neighbors next to where that's going? Where, when do they get to have a say of?
So they all go to a neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
Have to go to that neighborhood meeting and it has to meet the same legal notice.
Where in that order is that, under the?
It's right before the term or right after the.
Oh, I see.
Completeness. This was the the section of the code that I I think I'm I'm the most proud of because it certainly was at the leading edge, I think, of some other communities thinking about these things. We had some really just very unique, in my opinion, rules on on what lots were able to build an ADU. So prior to 2021, if you were in community residential, which I imagine most of the folks that are, if you're not in South Fruta residential, you live in community residential presently, you had to have a lot that was over 20% bigger than the lot minimum to build an ADU. Had nothing to do with your covenants, had nothing to do with anything. Pretty much an arbitrary number, not sure where it came from. We lifted that restriction and just allowed accessory dwelling units by right to be built in community residential. And we've seen over a dozen of them built. And a great, I think, success story is that infill redevelopment or infill development on Sycamore, which is 10 lots and all of them have ADUs. So we're seeing 20 units where we would have saw 10, which I think is really strong for our downtown. I think kind of the the methodology that we were trying to achieve with regards to some of these changes to basic definitions. Also, there was this interesting stipulation prior to 2021 where if you created lots in community residential, you if you created 10 of them, you got one duplex. So but like we allowed duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes all by right, but you had to create a certain number of units and then you were afforded a a duplex. And so kind of odd. And so we got rid of that and found a really nifty way around the condominiumization process. So what we did, which you all did, was we we were plating units, not condominiumized. So we we basically plat the building envelope. So that last filing in Copper Creek is a perfect example. The Harrison Townhomes is a perfect example. Common wall development that's not a condo that is maintained by the HOA. Village of Country Creek is a great example of that. Again, Copper Creek's a great example of that. Rose Creek's a great example of that. Those things would not have been allowed, even if they met met the density minimums or maximums, that is, in the code. So fairly significant shift. Several hundred lots of a variety of different housing alternatives have been generated as a result of that change. I it would be mere fractions. It would just be single-family detached homes if we didn't make that change. So pretty proud of that one. That was a small tweak, literally half a paragraph of a page got amended out and it created quite a bit of different opportunities. So just kind of goes to show you that like, that's a that's a pretty significant change. These are the recodified zoning districts. Every single time you go through a zoning ordinance ordinance update, you have to recodify the zoning districts that were in existence at the time that are not going to be in existence once you update your new zoning map. And so these are the set of zoning classifications that we codified. C1, C2 were not in the code before. Basically, the Cocapelli versus the frontage on 6 and 50, we broke those up into two different zoning classifications. Before, let me just go forward, before we had just two of them, general commercial, which contemplated all the uses along 6 and 50 and the Cocapelli. And we busted those up into C1 and C2. So one of them is the South Fruta, one of them is the State Highway Commercial. So we upzoned both of those and and made some tweaks to the allowable by right uses. Haven't seen 6 and 50 kind of pop the way that we would like to see it pop, but it has all of the the ability to, in my opinion, under the code. And South Fruta Residential, or not South Fruta Residential, but South Fruta Commercial, which is C2. I think a lot of people don't realize this, but all of those properties that are vacant within the Cocapelli are owned. So those are land holdings. They're not just for sale. And the only one that's for sale is what seems like should have been the parking lot of Taco Bell, but that is a vacant lot. And and we have actually been receiving some phone calls on on that to date. So but what was really interesting for our process going through the commercial zone districts is that most of the state highway is has buildings on it. And most of the downtown mixed-use properties have buildings on it. And so prior to the code update, everything had to go through the the site design process and everything had to meet the new design standards as if it was a new building. And there was this one caveat in here, which not a lot of people pay a lot of attention to, but it says the architectural and site design standards for this chapter are applicable to new buildings and also building additions, exterior remodels, for which building costs succeed 50% of the Mesa County Assessor's current actual value of current improvements in the subject property. No idea why you would tie it to building valuation or like, you know, cost of construction. But essentially, you turn a house into a coffee shop or you turn a house into a realtor office or you turn a house into a sandwich shop. Like, you're you're have to build basically a brand-new building like like the Dairy Queen or like Jolly Smiles or like Visual Eyes. So that's a pretty tough threshold to hit for for redevelopment, which was a a pretty significant barrier to entry from our perspective. So here's a here's just a couple examples of of some some tough land use applications that had some hiccups, not necessarily because the city wanted there to be hiccups, but just because that's what the the rules stated at this point in time. So Hot Tomato, I mean, they required a variance for their parking requirements and their lot coverage. They actually had to get a setback variance for their walkout cooler. Those things are now automatic percent adjustments for pre-existing buildings in our DMU zone. So they wouldn't have had to go through that process. I don't really know like the the why this happened this way, but Jolly Smiles and Visual Eyes, like they had to park their own site, which is very different than the rest of the commercial land uses that are in the downtown. But what's also interesting, also for Alpine Bank, we have this provision in the code, which is 60% window transparency. So you got to wrap the building with windows, you know, to emulate kind of that downtown feel that that everybody wants to see. But like, that seems kind of weird if you're like in a doctor's office and or if somebody's counting your money. And so so like, we we didn't necessarily try and like figure out how to review all those projects. We just tried to figure out how to let common sense prevail. And I think that's where we achieved some interesting changes to the code that not necessarily had much to do with with like not having any glazing. But as you as you recall, like the Colaramo, they went under this code provision. They basically shifted their building diagonally towards the intersection to avoid a lot of these restrictions, which I thought was kind of a unique perspective on on how to still meet the intent. So where where we changed this 50%, the 50% that was tied to the assessor's current actual value and changed to the set of regulations, which are probably, they probably have been the most impactful, I would say, of of the entire land use code rewrite, is you don't go through the design stand or you don't go through the site design process. You just pick up a commercial planning clearance if those four bullets, you know. So building additions where additional building square footage or redevelopment ground cover exceeds 30% or a substantial exterior remodel where more than 50% of the exterior facades are undergoing reconstruction. That properties undergoing change of land use in new buildings should have just been one bullet. But what that did was that created the ability for farm to be redeveloped without having to meet the design standards. It's a big 15,000-square-foot metal building, pretty hard to stucco that. Not sure we would have wanted that to happen anyways. Copper Club was a daycare, it was a daycare. You know, so it was a block building. We did, we got creative so that we weren't doing a substantial exterior remodel there. So we allowed them to paint the building, redevelop that into a business that's been quite successful. 169 South Mulberry, a deal we just contemplated, nowhere near 60% window transparency. Got a couple falling down like garage doors and like, but like, we're gonna, we're gonna make that a better situation. But like, there's no way you could achieve the the design standards today without tearing that building down. And so we're getting it redeveloped as a result. Skips, perfect example. You know, I mean, that kept the window glazing, but like, that would have been a change of use where they would have had to contemplate parking requirements. They wouldn't have been able to hang any other mechanicals off of off of their building or on the roof without screening them. I mean, a lot of those things would have been difficult to to do. Sparks Fly, which was happened in the industrial zone district, but like Co-op Tower, I mean, those are all reuses that I think are, we should all be pretty proud of because we've been able to have a lot of businesses start as a result of of maybe contemplating the regulations a little differently. I won't go into great detail with this. This is a subarea that we have. You've got the 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 subarea, which is in yellow here. I don't know if you can see my cursor and then the neighborhood commercial overlay. So essentially, this was our attempt to try and recreate some of the synergy we've seen with some of the houses that are turning into low-impact, low-use commercial enterprises. You see that in Grand Junction, you see that even on Peach. But this was our kind of shot at trying to make that happen. We haven't seen a lot of sustained success, but it's still an opportunity for folks to not have to go and buy a commercially zoned property in the Cocapelli to start up some sort of personal service, accounting service, you know. You get the picture there. These are the recodified residential zone districts that that got pared down. So we had those four that are on your left and they turned into rural estate and large lot residential. And then we had the three that are on your left for the residential zone districts, not the ag ones. And they got tweaked with density provisions and also with lot coverage and with other allowable by right uses, which you can see right here. So single-family attached or detached is what that stands for. So you you're looking over at like the proposed new code, which allows four dwelling units per acre. Previously, it was two 7,000-square-foot lot. And now it's four dwelling units an acre at 7,000-square-foot lots. And then the same thing for community residential and monument preservation. This is what I was speaking to earlier when when Mike was talking about how contemplating all of the different design standards for all the different types of uses. These are the three that we have, the urban center and the commercial area, and those are the zone districts that they apply to. So DMU, C1, C2, and then the neighborhood commercial overlay. And then these are just some renderings that we baked into the code that that speak to the different design specifications per different zone districts. And then we did make some some tweaks to the parking standards. They were not they they were not like real earth-shattering. The the one thing that we were not requiring before for the the downtown or for the multi-family or for the commercial zoning classifications is having an engineer submit a parking demand analysis. You saw one of those from from Geodot Flats. So they 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 contemplated, you know, what the demand was going to be based off of the type of use. So we're going to continue to to do that, but those were some shifts that we had along with shared parking and then and then off-site parking with recorded agreements between businesses. If there were shared uses, we we generated that code amendment based off of accessory uses with food trucks. So like, if businesses were going to allow folks that were going to visit a food truck, they needed to be able to use their restroom facilities and their parking if that was going to be allowed. And then the density bonus chapter was, I think, 30-something pages when I started here. And we've pared it down to a set of prescriptive standards that are performance-based. Used to be a point system that the in the business, they call it density by design. And so you collect a number of points and you get. you collect a number of points and you get additional dwelling units per acre. And so we've switched to just what's on this density bonus criteria, which is a percentage of open space and bike and trail connections that have a linear footage requirement and then alley loading or shared driveway access and then mix of housing types. And so that's what we've arrived at with the additional dwelling units per acre, but you can only get up to eight. So you can do all those things, but you'll still only get up to eight, or you can pick from the from the menu and then and then go from there.
The the challenge with the old one was we saw some results where you could you could get your points by doing a little bit of a lot of things. And it wasn't resulting in what the intent was to result in, because if you have a, you know, a little bit of a lot, the quality is not, doesn't tend to be. So we narrowed down to what is, what do we really want to see? If you're going to get density, what do we really want to see and have it impactful? So you know, open spaces and a strip of grass that you can't use or, you know, things like that. So that's been, that was, that was a big. We had proof of concept of the old change that didn't turn out what we had hoped for. So we had to make another change.
And I I mean, that's a great example, like the pocket parks, you know, or those little landscape strips, you know, along the front edge of the development. You know, the twenty percent open spaces and just the throwaway land. It's not a detention facility like the in order to receive that point, you have to have fifty percent of the units oriented towards the open space. So a great example of that is the layout of Copper Creek. I mean, that's how they laid out that project across the street from from Iron Wheel. So there's there's some unique ways to get there. You know, I don't think that these are sections of the code that are ever perfect. You consistently keep on tweaking them, but this, I think, has generated a little bit more of what the inspiration was behind the original density bonus chapter. And I think we're pretty pleased. Seeing. And then going forward, just wanted to take a second to these are code amendments that are in the process that will are not in process, but they're I guess they're in the process of being drafted. You will you will, as a body, along with the the planning commission, see some of these changes on the horizon. I know that Mike and Mary Elizabeth have mentioned that we need to make some modifications to the political signs section in the sign code to become more consistent with what the the latest litigation and Supreme Court decisions have been made. I know that there was an appetite to make some tweaks to the appeals section of the land use code, kind of on the heels of the gas station. Drive up, drive through for City Market. So we're going to take a crack at that. I'm not sure you'll just see that in a first reading. I'm assuming that will probably come before you in some sort of a workshop setting, but you know, we're at least trying to get those kind of primed and ready to rock and roll. The drive up, drive through uses for for accessory and for primary uses are and then how those interact with conditional uses. I think those are kind of married together. And they might quite frankly be married also with the appeal section. So we're going to take a stab at that and and bring that before you. We also have been working through the growing water smart. And so there's there's likely going to be some modifications to our landscaping standards that we would like to propose. And then we've been talking about this for quite some time, but we do need to update our transportation design standards and just our design standards in general. And that is like the sewer, concrete, you know, stormwater. I believe it was two thousand and nine when those were originally adopted. And so we've we have adopted pretty much a blank or not a blank, but a a full suite of of new documents, and that certainly is on the heels as well. So we're probably going to be working on that. That has a little bit of a different trajectory since it's not adopted by ordinance, it's adopted by resolution, but it's something that we're going to be working on. And it's appropriate considering the other things that we've done. It's only twenty-three slides, though, but I was slow out of the gate.
All right.
Just real quick, I want to make sure the downtown multi-use. When we first moved here, our side of Peach Street was commercial residential. My neighbors across the street could not do that. Like, it was just our side and like the other side, Mulberry, and that was it. So now, for instance, entire downtown area can be used that way. Neighborhoods. Like a best slope. I mean, you know, I love it. That's great, but I could plant over in the middle over here somewhere where it's just just homes, residents right now.
Correct. Yeah. And I I mean, I I think that it's it's slightly different since like a lot of the other public facilities need to be there. So for example, like the Peach Street uses are a direct beneficiary of the Civic Center parking lot. And so that story becomes quite a bit different when you're on some of these other more residential roads. And and that's protected within the regulations that have been adopted. It's just it allows the opportunity for an acupuncturist or a counselor to utilize their home as a as a, you know, a a small business. But that also doesn't mean that like every single spot's going to be allowed to be a coffee shop, but there might be, there might be some that are along intersection alignments or have street frontage that lends itself to that.
Any other questions? Just want to check in with everybody's other doing. Do we need a bio break now?
You've known nine o'clock, I'm like.
All right, why don't we take a five minute recess? All right, it's nine seventeen. We'll be back in five.
All right, we let's go ahead and reconvene. And we're going to jump back into the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We just two, two items wanted to see if, if we don't know 100% if Indy build is available, but they've been asking us for trying to schedule a tour. And so we were going to see if this time works for you and then kick it back to them. Wondering if on May 21st, we have a regular council meeting at seven. If you'd want to go over, do a tour from at six o'clock, six to six forty five. So that would be our next meeting, two weeks from now. Tour before the meeting, the muse will get on the calendar. We could all meet at this right here at the civic center and drive over together.
Does that do it again?
The so in two weeks from today, May 21st, 6pm.
I've got two interviews, so I would not be able to do it.
Oh, we have interviews. Gotcha. Okay.
Like to do it. We can try to reschedule them, but.
Do it earlier?
It's for, it's for board of adjustments, right?
Yeah, I believe.
Is that, is that easy to?
We reschedule the interview?
My great, yes.
Let's, if we could, that would be great.
Okay. All right, and.
How about everybody else?
We will, we will confirm, we'll confirm with Indy build. If it's confirmed, and we should know that even tomorrow. And we'll, if it's confirmed, we'll reschedule, we'll let you know, we get it on the calendar. Either way, we'll let you know. But the other item is, we recently talked about, you gave us direction that you're interested in looking into the possibility of pickleball courts at the fruit. Outside of the fruit of community center. We obviously, we, we have to go to bid for that type of project. Because it's over $25,000, we know that. But we did the group that we're working with that works out of F works or has a representative out of F works. It did give us some, some pretty good cost estimates that I, that I think are very reasonable. Or we can rely on those pretty well for just, just so you have an idea. But we'll have to, if you're interested, we'll go out to bid. And then we would get those pricing and then come to you for moving any funds to actually do that. But for two courts, and these would be oriented north, south, that's the best wave with the sun. Two courts would be fifty five, about fifty five thousand eight hundred. And four courts is about ninety five thousand eight sixty one. From a staff standpoint, if we were going to move forward on it, we would recommend going, doing the four courts. I think it'd be probably the best use of that space. And doing it all at once versus phasing it in. If, if there's an interest, you're not approving anything now, but what we would do, if there, if you're still interested in proceeding, we would actually do a formal bid process. And then to get under contract, we'd have to move the funds with you all to, to do that. So, but we don't want to waste people's time with a form of bid process if we're not interested in moving forward, having those types of numbers in mind. Does that make sense?
I got just one quick question. I drove by there the other day and it looks like they're building like a, I don't know, it's like a outdoors, like soccer little areas where the basketball courts were.
Oh, that's at Reed Park. Yeah.
Oh, I'm totally sorry. I'm sorry. You're talking about over there.
And that's, that's the, yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Where the skate park, I was off the mouse.
It's gonna be it, the, the, I think the proposal of the current person who's been working with planning commission, it's the same court material. Pass Reed Park. It's like a plastic-esque type of like.
It's similar, it's, but it's geared towards pickleball only.
Oh, yeah, that's a great use of that skate park area. Yeah.
Great.
Great.
All around.
All right, perfect. That's all I have for tonight.
Do you want to talk about changes to meetings?
Yeah, that's under, yep, that's under next item there for Deb, do you want to go over that?
Or I can, either way.
It doesn't matter. We had talked about at workshop, last workshop about rescheduling. The June 18th meeting to Monday, June 17th. Due to a lot of you and staff going to the CML conference. And then also cancelling the meeting of July 2nd. I think it is due to July 3rd fireworks and July 4th holiday, of course. So council had given us direction that that was what you wanted to do. So all we really need is just a motion as such.
And the motions on the, on that cover sheet at the bottom.
One hundred.
I've moved to approve rescheduling the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 regular city council meeting to Monday, June 17th, 2024. And cancel the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any additional discussion, questions? Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Stolarczyk?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next up is city council boards and commission assignments.
Yeah, I want to thank Deb did put together, updated the chart based on the notes we had from your discussion at the workshop. If everything looks correct, well, really, really just looking at the appointments. If the appointments look correct, then we'd entertain the motion that's on that cover sheet. You don't have to read all those, the motions really just to appoint the mayor and.
Your information, Janet Rowland contacted me to serve on the, what is they call it?
Oh, the.
Not EFSP.
Community Development Block.
CSBG.
CDBG, yeah.
Yeah, apparently Anna Stout took Joel's place on that as one of the elected officials. And she's asked me if I would sit on that and I said, yes. So we can add that back to our list.
We can, okay, sounds good.
The board, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
The community.
Community Development Block Grants. It's the county boards, Board of Commissioners.
You indicated that we really don't have a.
We don't, there's a potential for some unique situations in Fruta. But, but it's also, they need people representing the valley to approve those types of grants, no matter where they are in that community. So it's good to have.
They're required to have three elected officials on the board, so.
Yeah, great.
So in their motion, do we need to add that? Like, would we need to?
As amended.
As amended to add.
You, it would not hurt to do that, but we don't actually appoint that person. So the council and the mayor does not appoint the, a person on that board. The Board of Commissioners appoint elected officials on that board.
I have a question. What are the rules about having more than one counselor on it as a liaison on a board? Is there, is there a rule? It would not hurt my feelings to maintain staying on the arts and culture board, but I, but I want Andrea on there. I mean, that's the official position, but I'm just curious about if it's allowed to have more than one of us.
I think a lot of the stuff says, uh.
Yeah, all of our, all of our current stuff is written that we have a liaison for our own boards. There's, the, the challenges with that is, is it doesn't create a majority. So it's not a, you know, obviously if two of you met, you know, so that I don't think we run into that, but. You know, I, I'd probably want to ask Mary Elizabeth a little bit more, but I, and, and you know, what the thoughts of council are, but I.
Someone just be a member of the, of the arts and culture board and not be a liaison.
We have that kind of with the Fruta Chamber.
Yeah.
I'm the official liaison, but you're a member, same business person. But the difference is the mayor appoints.
Yeah, but for like city boards and commissions, if you're on council, the only opportunity is the council appointing you as a liaison, not as.
That's where the conflict comes in.
I think there's a, a, be a perceived conflict with having too much representation from council on these boards and commissions. Because these boards and commissions are advisory to us. And if we start populating them too much, then they're not advisory.
Well, sure, yes.
I guess that's where I see a concern with it.
Yes, and it's fine. I'm fine. I just, I just thought I would ask and see if there was, I, because I wasn't clear, like if there was an actual rule about that. And mainly made me think about it because I knew you and Andrea were in the chamber. I know it's different, but yeah, okay, I just wanted to ask.
Mayor, I'd like to move to appoint the mayor and city council members to the various boards and commissions as stated in the attached list for terms beginning in May of 2024. And ending in April of 2026.
Second.
First and a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Well, they said we didn't really need to, because we don't appoint.
It'd be good though.
Okay.
Well, we'll.
We don't have to, but Mike did say.
We can, we can add it to the list. I mean, we have that list of like all the additionals, so.
Be in the minutes anyways.
Yeah, okay.
So we're covered.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded. Was that?
I did.
Okay, all right, thank you. Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Stolarczyk? Counselor Miller?
Affirmative.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi? Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, James, for trying to making sure we're on the up and up.
Sure.
All right, council reports and actions. Anybody want to go first? All right, Amy.
Yeah. You're getting tricky. I had our historical preservation meeting. That was mostly getting our two awesome new members caught up to speed on what we do and what our goals are. And, and then sort of starting the conversation about history fair. Can be, there's going to be some fun little things because it's our 140th birthday this year. So we're going to be celebrating folks on Brutus 140th birthday. So kind of just starting the conversations around that. And I think that's all I got.
All right, James.
Nothing from me today.
Nothing for me today.
Park and Rec Commission. What I like is we're at a good time, right? But it was a little ball, they're getting busy, they're really looking at how can we look at improvements with. Snooks Bottom. And then what's kind of fun that's come from that too, is just like looking at how do we want to utilize that space? But what's come from is they're at the Wake, Wake Park, is that that, there's a part of the lake that's on the west, western end, which is public. That I don't think.
You don't have to pay?
It's not, no, no, no. It is public free access. And so they're going to be looking into that. How we can communicate things like that. So I think it's, we've got, we'll have a near full, or we will have a full board here shortly after an interview tonight. But they're going to become very, very active board, which is. So, and they're very excited.
Hey, Aaron, is, is some of that stirred because of the fact that we're not going to have a lake all summer? They trying to look at that, where Snooks is going to get overrun.
No, I think it more just the line is like, what, what, it's just general thing like that's where they kind of started focusing of where, like, what can they do as, as a, as an advisory board? And that's just kind of where they've settled and, and so they're just looking at inconsistencies, how can they improve, communicate what's best use for it or not? So they're all very excited and I think that we're going to see some good stuff come here in the next few months.
Yeah, just for everybody's knowledge, so we own that lake. So it's a public private partnership and our agreement with them and the lease.
Talking to Wake, sorry, the, the.
I'm on the Wake zone. Well, we own Snooks as well, but we own, but I'm on the Wake zone. When we negotiated that public private partnership, we leased them the lake. And part of the requirements are for them to keep the west side open to the public. So you can bring your own paddle boards there and those types of things, but they also rent, but it's only during their operating hours. So it is closed when they are closed. And because we don't have anybody there or don't have the ability to staff doing that. So what they've, so recently the I'm on these contacted me and we met out on site. And they were just wondering if there's ways in the future we can partner with cleaning up the north side of the lake. So you can access it better because right now you access it off of their docks. So I have staff looking into some of those types of, there's grants out there for kind of cleanup of along. Kind of like we do along the washes. So looking at some of that to the, and this just happened last week. So, but the, but it's been that way for seven years now. And we've done like meet the manager on paddleboard, we're going to schedule one this, this summer as well. But it doesn't.
Oh, no, no, no. We don't get workman's comp.
Oh. Can you, can you communicate that with, with Mark to bring that aspect to the commission? Because I think they're excited about. Getting better access, communicating that out. There, we started talking about it last night about how can you have better access? Because there's really none of that. So if you, if we want to have this commission look into all that and help staff with it, then this is a great, great thing to push down to them.
Yep.
And not just let staff have fun with it, but let the, the commission have fun with it as.
Right, right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. None for me. Nothing for you?
Um, in regards to date changes, I also was curious. We hadn't talked about it before, but I think last year we didn't meet the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Is that something?
That's a very good question.
That's a good, I'll be traveling that day back from California, so I won't be here.
Just.
It'll be a workshop.
Yeah, that's, that would be the workshop. We.
Also Juco, so I wouldn't be sad at all.
Yes.
Exactly why I'm mad.
We don't love you all and want to meet, but.
We're talking the 28th.
Yes, the 28th.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we can definitely accommodate that. We would just, we would just bump our, I mean, the five year CIP update, transportation update, and then the chamber MOU, we could just reschedule at different meetings. Those aren't like, there, there's no timeliness of that meeting for those two items is what I'm saying, so. You could, we don't, we don't have, we could, and you could just like, if you're all good with that, I, if someone can make a motion that we like.
What do you mean? You brought it up, you get to make the motion.
I moved to cancel the May 28th, 2024 meeting, city council meeting.
Workshop, city council workshop.
You have a first and a second.
Counselor Stolarczyk?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Hi.
Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi? Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yeah.
Most impassioned six zero.
Guys are lucky I don't get to vote. Anything else on this one?
Maybe it's still would have passed.
I did go to the livability commission meeting and I don't know if I'm supposed to.
No, this, I'm glad you're bringing it up. Please update, yes.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to jump in to talk about localism with them as we decided to do. We had a great discussion. They feel like that they can keep communication under their purview in the way that they do it. But that the localism idea was a deeper breadth of communication and city ambassadorship and things like that than what they felt comfortable covering. And so they actually made a motion to. To, to encourage or to suggest to the council that we move forward with a localism board. And that we would work collaborative, have a collaborative relationship with that board when necessary.
Okay.
And so that, that was a, if you remember, council gave us direction, kind of take it to them, we got their feedback now. Next steps that we would need as staff is we would need to schedule a time where. Kind of back to where we, where we started, right? From not started, but back to the, the, the discussion that led to go into livability. We, we would need to have a discussion and get direction on, are we creating, you know, creating the bylaws ahead of time with, with the goals? And, and those types of things or create, you know, just the order of operations and what the goals and would, would be like in more detail than the, the broad recommendation, but detailing it out. So, so that would be something we, we would need to plug in as a, as a council discussion at a future meeting now that we have that feedback, right? So. I guess what I'm saying, we're on hold until we have that, so.
So the next steps will be to coming up basically to bylaws.
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting, getting direction from you all so that we can put something together and bring back to you, right?
We want to do that, so we'll provide that at a workshop. Yep. Great. Anything else?
No.
All right. It's all good. I don't know if I'm supposed to do this. Sarah, can I put you on the spot a little bit about FEMA?
I can touch on that, so. Gosh, where do I begin? Last week, Ammon Pierce, our marketing and communications coordinator and I attended a, it was a basic PIOs class hosted by FEMA. And it essentially went into like all the basic information you, you need to know to communicate during an incident, crisis communication. Let's see. And so since I've started here at the city of Fruta, I've been a part of, it's called the Mesa County JIC. And so members of different organizations, we get together once a month to about, talk about crisis communications. And really being, you know, partners in times of crisis, since we are kind of a smaller community. If we ever had, hopefully not, but if anything ever happened, we'd have those partnerships in place. And other organizations could step in and help with communications, getting that out to our residents through partnerships. Our stakeholders, you know. A part of that group is Mesa County, D51, Grand Valley Power, XL Energy, U Water. So all of like the big players within the area that you would need to have those partnerships with during a crisis, go to those meetings. But I've been going through FEMA classes. They're all free and on mostly online to really get a sense of what it would take to communicate during a crisis. And so it really goes into kind of like, once an incident, command structure goes into place. How as a PIO, you would work with the leaders in the community to get information out as quickly as possible. So it was super beneficial to go to. I learned a lot, Ammon learned a lot. I feel very prepared. We also had Travis Holder, our fire marshal, he attended the class as well. He acts as lower valleys PIO, Public Information Officer. And then Heather Benjamin, she works for Family Health West. She's their PIO, so she attended as well. And she has a large background in the communications world, so she's a great resource to lean on. She used to work for the sheriff's office before. And it's probably going way too long, but it's been, it's been awesome. I love learning about it. It's very interesting to me, you know, we went through. A process, you know, doing a press conference, putting on an entire press conference during the class, interview skills, writing skills, press releases, all those things that you need to know about. And then just going back, so Mesa County, we meet and then Heather, Travis, and then our lieutenant Nick Peck and I, we meet once a month as well. And just talk about in Fruta, if anything happened, what our plan would be until other partners could come in and support us. So, yeah. Yeah.
Question is, does it make sense in, you know, for crisis communication in a, if there's some sort of disaster? That us as council kind of have an overview? I mean, I would like an overview, just so if it happens, we are somewhat prepared in terms of we know where to point people and where to get, step in and where to get out of the way.
Yeah, we, we have a, we have a full plan. The way our, our former government works, that ends up falling upon me in my role and then keeping you all updated. So really that's the, the, the role that you all find yourselves in. But there gets more specifics and we do need to, we have that on the list for covering, coming up as well. But it's a, we have our local and then we have our, how we work with the region as well. So like there's the local plan and then there's the regional plans and. how we work with the region as well. So like there's the local plan and then there's the regional plans and, um, happy to share that and do an overview with you.
That would be great. So something happens where we feel at least a little bit better prepared. So thank you. Um, I'd like to say a bunch of thank yous for this weekend, uh, walking through the festival. James, I don't know how you're still, I know you're barely standing, but that's pretty good considering I saw how much you were running around. I also want to shout out to Matt. I ran into him, I don't know how many times, that man had a smile on his face the entire time. And was one of the most helpful people I've ever met, so shout out to him, great job. Anybody here have an aversion to bowling? Just to change up the question. Okay, good. All right. Mike and I are starting to work on retreat stuff, so, and that's not a red herring. Tomorrow, there is the Grand Junction State of the Valley, Mike and I will be presenting. Kind of going in cold, we don't know what the questions are, so it's a little bit nerve wracking, uh, on that. Mike's there, of course, we'll be fun. All I do is go, Mike, do I take this one? I know how this plays out. We've had continued, there's been more conversations with Mind Springs. We see a lot of this being played out in the paper. I won't comment on kind of my opinions and playing it out in that field, but there are conversations still going on in the background. Uh, there's Mesa County, uh, municipalities are all still trying to figure out what we can do, what makes sense to do. Uh, and when there's firm action items, I will bring things up to the rest of council, but I didn't think, want you to think that had fallen off the radar screen. And that's it for me. So, anybody have anything else? Kind of feel like.
The state of the city film is tomorrow night.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Six o'clock at Farm, Rocky Mountain PBS at Farm, so.
Thank you, thank you. I forgot about that. All right. Uh, now I gotta remember how we go into executive session. All right, um, you need a motion?
You gotta read that whole.
After we make a motion.
You have to make the motion first.
I moved to convene into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under C R S section twenty four, six, four oh two, four F, for the municipal court judges in formal review.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish? And Counselor Stolarczyk? Motion passes six zero.